6:50 PM, this begins the recording for the Marion City Council meeting.
Yeah, they loved it.
Hola.
Hi.
¿Cómo estás?
How was?
It was amazing. It was really.
It was. Where did you go? The Glaufa Gays.
Yes.
Um, the kids freaking loved it.
Really?
Loved it. I did, so, um, I mean, like, shocked by myself. The entire travel, like, waiting around in lines, crossing on the side, nobody, yeah, nobody helped out that time. I know. Yes. I did, and, um, the kids' club, you can drop them off at. And so, I loved it. They were like, first day, I was like, okay, we have two hours to get a amount of time, and they're like, I don't got a lot, we're four hours. I'm like, okay. Here you go.
That's amazing.
Yeah, they loved it.
That's really cool.
Yes, yes. Um, did my sister win there?
No.
Or, in a high school. Yeah, high school. We're gonna switch them. Um, but, studying, she's, she doesn't have a stock. Portraits, whatever, whatever.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, this is Tye.
Nene, how are you?
Sorry.
You're good.
I love it. You are very cool.
That's all flesh, she's pretty excited.
Yeah.
We do have Benny Reyes lined up for.
We're going to dinner.
Oh, okay. Lovely, very nice. Where are you going?
Maybe we'll drop down.
Simplicity should make better than you.
She's like, nah.
With the mayor?
Yeah.
It's, it's an opposing line. For every other, for everyone, but then, you know, I'm like.
Everybody.
Guys, we gotta take our picture.
Yeah.
Go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Right now, I think that I've heard.
I love you.
Friday morning, you look so cute.
Well, that's just hard to measure, and that's, she's so good.
I think I'm really good.
You're so bad.
Congrats.
Take the rice with us.
You were awesome on your discussion.
Oh, my gosh. I was like, hey. What you know about candy art?
No, it's really not.
That was one of my first.
That was the same.
For anything, five minutes really is. So I was like, trying to fill in a five-minute cap, but I don't really have it, so. Yeah.
Don Williams, every opportunity.
He shows up, like.
Every time. Who's your dad, he's the money guy, right? We need a finance director.
Do you want to explain which?
Is this your daughter?
Yes.
She looks like you.
Hi.
Uh, I help state, regional, local governments, like, and nonprofits borrow money to pay for a government.
I said you don't. What are you doing here? Do you have to go every single room?
Just when I have stuff on the other end. And I super, I do, so.
I'm gonna move.
So this is open session. And then, there's an exacting session, that's a closed session.
Are you, are you in that one? What's your track?
Yes, super, super. You knew what?
Paragraph.
Hey, how are you? Check this out. Get it zoom in them out. In the parking quarters, it's sitting next to it on the table, and I'm done getting up, it's really like a game of strategy. But, I can't. I just like, yeah, I just kind of put them on the floor, and I thought if. I did. Probably. Actually, they introduced the first public comment limit. Ever. This meeting tomorrow, there's only five minutes. Our store, never before. Before the meeting started, they pointed out, it's never been announced, there's never been a lot in here, and Nancy talked like fifteen minutes before Nancy had it. I would interrupt, I mean, after you say you've got a boy. It's a prayer, because she goes to the art gallery.
According to my AP knowledge.
So. I need to find a way to, uh, doesn't sound, uh, tremendous power to do this. The, uh, it makes it hard to record. You get the audio of everyone talking.
She put it like.
It is, well, that's part of the name down here. There ain't one of them without a hard shop. There isn't. There's a council meeting, and executive, and then we're crossing the, uh, the fact back. We'll take the same round that we sent over there.
I know, because one of these.
Um, yeah, it's a holler. It's a holler, staying where they will, say, well, use trash. When Dr. Seaman. Can you guys see that? Yeah. If you'll say those money, it's like, uh, because, I mean, one big contract, uh, reduce the administrative cost of trash company, so. Oh, yeah, it'll still raise it.
Like, I made dabble, because it averages two, and I've seen that, like, I can do it. Can you add me in?
He will. He will. Okay.
Half of the Prairie Village. Maybe it was their way, one of those cities over there.
I don't know, I'm just used to like.
They have a trash.
We need some entertainment.
There were companies, in the city, the city is literally busy. There's also problems with, like, trash cars, people last their needs, like, spit in their house, and they call them small ones. Not every company is willing to do that, but. That's funny. You didn't have school today. Choice, you know, trash man. Oh, did you work all night? All day, or regular? Oh, because SMS, you was. I lived in North City for some years. And how were they good, were they crazy?
For no reason.
Just because. And, uh, you could not have a big trash car. You have to carry it up the stairs every day, or every week. So. Size is enough at all. I'm gonna ask if they pull the new session down here.
On my Twitter.
Yes. But.
You can call me.
I try not to do that every meeting, so it's tiring on me as well. But I think our time's up. I'm already. Too bad I didn't do it soon.
I didn't even, like, when I went in.
No, for sure, when the city was served. Every loss, I have.
I was like, bye. I didn't even know why.
He should be here if he's down. He doesn't always answer, like. Flag, the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Payton.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Here.
Councilmember Hand.
Here.
Councilmember Callah.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silver's.
Here.
Councilmember Yardage.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear in the agenda. Comments about items on the revenue agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. And in accordance with governing bodies, rules, procedures, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal and percolating or slanderous. I had no one signed up on our sheet, but that does not preclude you from coming forward at this time to have a public comment. Mr. Ward, sir, if you name that as a record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Billy Crowe, 6633 Wed Street. I understand there will be a, uh, there will be a work session, uh, following this meeting to discuss single holler. A lot of neighbors are really excited to hear what the city is doing about that. So I'm kind of sad to hear that that's gonna happen upstairs, where the city's camera and microphones are off, and citizens won't be able to see that on the city's website, the city's YouTube channel. Uh, if they search on YouTube after this date, they will be able to find the recording, if they search for Marion, um, work session, city council, as you guys will as well. Uh, because I'm gonna try to record that to share with neighbors. Hopefully, the audio comes out okay, I know it's kind of noisy up there, and, and no city council person's actually facing the public in that room, which is not ideal, but I'm glad the discussion's gonna happen nonetheless, um, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Crowe? Anyone else coming forward this evening? Okay, I see no one else coming forward, I will close out the, uh, public items. Uh, next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed under this heading should be retained by city council. May be enacted by one motion, but be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case others will be removed from the consent agenda considered separately. So we can only have one item on the agendas. Now, have a discussion of that? Say no discussion of that. Um, I would retain a motion. Mr. Silver's.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to the council to approve consent agenda, uh, consent agenda, item number one.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second to chat?
Yes, bring a second.
You may have a little bit of a motion, a second.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hand.
Aye.
Councilmember Callah.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yardage.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item up is the mayor's report, in which time I have a proclamation from Seven Days of Kindness Week that I would like to read. Whereas Seven Days Make a Ripple, Change the World, is an annual series of events demonstrating how hatred, bigotry, and ignorance can be overcome by kindness, respect, and understanding. And whereas Seven Days commemorates the lives of Dr. William Corberron, Edith Grantson Reed Underwood, and Teresa Lamano, who were murdered on April thirteenth, twenty fourteen, by encouraging all people to discover commonalities and overcome evil acts with kindness. And whereas Seven Days Twenty Twenty Five is March thirty-one through April eighth, and focuses on kindness through activities with data themes of love, discover you, others, connect, go, and onward. And whereas Marion is committed to being a community where kindness is key and understanding paramount, and strongly supports a partnership with a worthy outreach effort by conducting Seven Days of Kindness activities. Now therefore, I am paid with virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, to hereby proclaim March thirty-one to April eighth, twenty twenty-five, as Seven Days of Kindness Week in the city of Marion. I encourage all residents, businesses, organizations, and visitors to come together to be more understanding of differences, and act more kindly to others, thereby making the world a better place, one ripple at a time. I proclaim on the twenty-fourth day of March, twenty twenty-five, I pay the mayor. And in our audience this evening, we have Stephanie O'Sullivan, who's a board member of Seven Days, and I will bring this, uh, proclamation down and give it to her in a second, but if you come forward to the podium, I'd give you a moment to say a few words.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and the city council, for the proclamation. I'm Stephanie O'Sullivan, I'm, uh, representing Seven Days as a board member. I'm also a leader at Advent Health, and I'm a believer in the power of kindness. And, like you mentioned, our mission is to overcome hate, education, and dialogue, and we're promoting our Week of Kindness from March thirty-first through April eighth. Also, I invite all of you to attend our Kindness Breakfast, that's on Wednesday, April second, at the Church of the Resurrection. If you'd like more information about that, you can find it on the website at sevendays.org. Also, I brought some resources here for you today, maybe I can leave those with you, and, um, some stickers and kindness cards, there's some bookmarks that have some great adult reading about kindness on there. And I just want to say, we really appreciate Marion's kindness to its community, all the things that you do, the Parks and Rec, and support for the arts, and community engagement, so thank you so much for being kind. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you, if you were to wait right there on, like, maybe.
Okay, great.
I'm just putting your foot, sorry. You guys can both go.
Yeah, she's gonna.
You go, sit down. Okay, we're good, thank you. Let's get on the ground. Okay, a couple of things in the mayor's report, and I'll get right to it. Um, I always like to say a little bit about my role in the council membership. I didn't have an opportunity to speak to all the councils, so please speak up at the end if I miss you. But, uh, I attended the Johnson County, White Oak County Mayor's Dinner, it was hosted by the next mayor, Sayers, at their new Justice Center. Very nice facility, we've got to take a tour of it. Uh, I had a council member, Mr. Hill, put together tonight's agenda. Uh, I attended a Zoom meeting of the Johnson County Transit Strategic Planning Group. Uh, lots of ideas were discussed to improve on routes, increase ridership, uh, some consolidation of routes was discussed, and reducing wait times was important. Uh, recommendations to the county commissioners to be forthcoming. I attended the Flags for Freedom Committee meeting, uh, lots of great ideas were discussed. We'll be stepping up a notch this year with van, food, other involvements of other groups, uh, so, exciting times to happen on July fourth. Uh, several councilmembers attended the Public Art Committee, appreciate that. Uh, they have narrowed the epic standard of understanding to three, and eventually get to one to make a recommendation for the city councils. Did anyone else, some things I forgot, I'm gonna. Go ahead, Miss Santos.
I went to the Women's Business Breakfast with some Marion businesswomen, it was quite delightful, and our friend, Meredith Houghton, was our special speaker. It was delightful.
Thank you for attending. Okay, well, that's all, I hope, go ahead, Miss Santos.
Jacob, I went to an old seat, when was she going to be seat?
Oh, my gosh, I missed that. That was, since the last meeting, when you was during the meeting, and you were there, so that's why you're good. Yes, we missed you guys.
And, um, we focused specifically on affordable housing, um, as well as making sure that federal funding still comes to projects in Kansas that, especially, are already in progress, um, that are intergovernmental partnerships with federal government.
Dates on that, or, or?
You're cute. No.
It's not like a chat.
No, but at least one of our senators was really responsive to a lot of our questions.
Thank you guys for giving that representation, let's, okay, anything else? All right, so let's move right along into, um, council items. First one up is the circular purchase of a twenty twenty-five international. Well, I just got your town called, Director.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, our twenty twenty-five budget includes replacement of two plow trucks for the Public Works Department. The current trucks were purchased in two thousand and nine and have reached the end of their life cycle as a frontline unit. Um, our fleet superintendent, Ross Davis, who is in the audience tonight, ready to answer any of your technical questions, um, recommends purchase of an international cab chassis from Rush Truck Center of Missouri. That would be purchased through a cooperative bid. He also researched, uh, dump bodies, dump spreader bodies, and recommends the buyer's MDS, which is a little different than what we've used in the past. This actually incorporates a salt spreader into the dump bed, which will remove the need for a separate spreader. So we're really excited about that. Um, the total cost for both dump trucks with plow and warning light equipment is five hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty cents. And, um, when we got the quotes, we talked about tariffs with the manufacturers, they're concerned about that. So based on our discussion, we request that they give us, um, to the best of their knowledge, what would be a maximum tariff cost. And the chassis, um, they're indicating a potential of up to ten percent on both chassis, and up to twenty-five percent on the warning light equipment. So that would be a total of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cents in tariffs. So we're recommending that, um, the council approve the purchase of this equipment in an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents, which would also include the tariffs. So if there are tariffs, the city will only pay the actual cost of the tariffs at the time of build, and we'll have the option to cancel the purchase, if for some reason it's a lot higher. So, uh, the equipment and vehicles was under budget, but if we approve the, uh, the budget with tariffs costs, that would exceed the budget by eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents. And there are adequate funds available from the contingency in our budget to cover this overage. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as Ross Davis.
Any questions for her to come to you? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chaveta.
Uh, I know tariffs are, um, a mess, so, um, if we, I assume if we approve this, this evening, we will place an order within the next few days, week? And then, are we subject to that tariff, right? Like, have they said, like, even if it's not built by this date, we'll be subject to that tariff still, or do they even know?
So, um, and I may have Ross giving all the details, but, uh, once we order it, and then at the time when they're ready to build it, is when the tariffs will go into effect. Do you want to add anything to that?
No.
How, what's the lead time on that?
Yes, four or six months. That's, that's the rule they go, chassis, if it'll only go, everything else, you just start building right away.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you have a picture? You always make pictures. Thanks for answering.
Before we get this word, uh, when do you anticipate delivery? Probably five per stone. Yeah, boys. Just, just a question. Miss Santos, go ahead. Actually, I have two questions. One, just to confirm that this was a budget of purchase, it was in the budget, and expect. And then my second question is, it kind of goes along with, uh, Stacy's question. I'm sure you all received sales sheets for all of these items, would it be possible to include those in the packets in the future?
They're actually in the pack.
The actual, like, images of the, like, the actual sales sheets, images.
Oh, yes. A picture of the equipment.
Yeah, just so, um, I, I googled it, but it'd be nice to know if I was googling the actual.
Okay.
Product that appears.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, just curious, how many of these trucks do we have?
Apparently, we have five. Five, okay.
Thank you.
And then, following up on the numbers, why is it then that we do two at once? I understand we bought them both in two thousand and nine, but is there any opportunity for staggering, or is there efficiency in having two that are alike?
Similar systems, because they upgrade all the time. So like, right now, we have three trucks that have one system, these other two trucks have different, it, we're both computerized, so they, they upgrade and they act different, so the spacing together helps it.
So it has.
Operator control matter.
Sure. Okay, thanks. And then, we also look at, you know, our quick equipment fund, and then look at our costs, and try to make sure that we're not purchasing a lot in one year versus another, so we kind of balance that, and Ross does a good job of that.
Mr. Santos. Yeah, thank you, now that I've seen these photos, I have another question. So this is a dedicated salt spreader. Because it looks like it has a conveyor in the bed. It does, there's a plate attached to it. So it can be used for a lot of your items. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Crowe. Probably gonna get to make one again. Yeah, we have the end of the cloud, I don't see it.
One a year.
Anyone else?
Um, this is a question about the tariffs in general, but as we put things out to bid, are we starting to see the bids increase in number as they come back due to tariff fear? And, I don't think we have yet, but, you know, as we see.
This is the first one? This, yeah. Okay. But, I know that you mentioned the police cars, that there's another concern whenever we purchase out about tariffs.
They don't hold on that, as far as, they won't put pricing out.
Police cars aren't cold.
Majority of them, yeah.
Yeah. Because I know we go through that pool to purchase them.
Yeah, and they, they came out with pricing for all that, and I believe December, they got a free. So, all that pricing was pretty all of this, and so they're, I know if they're made, uh, I think we're looking to get EVs that are made in Mexico, so, we can't, they won't give us pricing on those details, because they're, I think they're solely made in Mexico, it's a battery, everything.
Got it. And then, as far as construction costs go, we haven't seen many of.
We haven't yet.
Yet, okay, great. And we're already dipping into contingency for those things, potentially, for this item, yes.
Cool, cool, cool. Thanks.
I just want to say, thank you for outlining and line iteming the tariff, um, not knowing what it may be coming forward. Um, do we expect, or, do we expect to see that probably for the foreseeable future, that we get the tariff as a line item? So that we know if, if it is in place when we order, or if it's in place when we fabricate it, or accept delivery, or whatever the case may be, we at least have to accommodate that in the budget.
Yes, and we'll be talking to all the manufacturers, like a construction project, you know, we're not seeing that because they'll start right away, but these, this equipment, since it has such a lead time, that's kind of the uncertainty. But yes, we will, we will pay attention and talk to manufacturers, and try to make sure that we're including that cost.
I just, I also want to make sure, thank you for explaining that, outlining it.
Sure.
Great, you should.
Sorry, one more tariff question, because I've been dealing with this in my other job. Um, are, are they outlining them as a separate line item, or are they just saying that's one of this much, or, like, are you asking for, not specific to just this, but like, future too? Are we going to ask you, like, a line item, like, it went up because of the steel cost, or whatever?
I, feel free to add, but I'm assuming once there is a tariff, it'll be included on the line item automatically. This one was, like, we're anticipating it could happen, so we went ahead and asked that.
This one was like, we're anticipating it could happen, so we went ahead and asked that.
I've had suppliers just like flat fee, like this is what it's going up. And we don't, like, there's no transparency. So, I was just hopeful that we were getting some transparency and.
Yes, do you have?
With, with the chassis, with the winged deal for now, they said that they will, if we ask, they will give us what the increase is for. And I can talk to them if you can, Mary, before. But as far as the vehicles, I don't know if we're just going to get increased prices. But we have base prices for all of this, so we can also.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you filling all the tariff questions. We know you're not tariff experts. We just want to be clear that our budgeting has been accurate, but this is impacting our government.
Yes.
Thank you.
And thanks to Ross for tracking all that down. Thanks, Ross.
Thank you. Okay, no other questions? I would entertain a motion for this item. Ms. Sanders.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to the council approve the purchase of two 2025 international HB 507 chassis, two buyers' MDS dump spreader bodies and warning light equipment in an amount not to exceed $551,170.10.
Ms. Sanders, go ahead, Ms. Chard.
Mr. Mayor, second.
You may invoke a motion, second.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Ladyman Clerk, it looks like we're prepared to come to you at the podium for item number two.
Well, I know you've heard a lot about the 49th Street Switzer Antioch Project. We're really exciting, excited about it. It's getting closer to beginning construction. Just a reminder, it's a two-inch metal overlay, replacement of curb and gutter, pavement markings, stormwater improvements, a new sidewalk on both sides of the street and replacement of existing sidewalk, and bike lanes on the south side of the street from Knox to Antioch. The project was bid in February and includes the bid and a bid alternate. And the bid alternate includes replacement of up to nine gravel driveways as part of the driveway grant program. So, we opened bids from six contractors and Amino Brothers Construction, Inc. was the low bidder. The total bid with bid alternate is $2,866,714.50. We reviewed the bids and recommend approving the contract with Amino. I understand that Amino hasn't done any work in Marion, but I've worked with them in other cities. So, we're recommending their approval. A little update on the project, Water One started a water main replacement. They're going to be replacing the water main from Knox to Antioch. And they're working between Benson and Antioch right now. So, there will be a lane drop for eastbound traffic, then they'll move farther west. We also have Kansas Gas starting tomorrow, starting from Switzer moving east. And they won't be under payment, they'll be in the right of way, but not under payment. As far as land acquisitions, we have 56 of 69 tracks approved. We have 13 left and working with our land acquisition attorney as well as the city attorney to, they filed the ordinance in district court and we should be having a hearing soon. And we should have those easements acquired by, no later than June 1st. So, I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other question?
Okay.
Hate to show my nerds, but I haven't been riding my bicycle lately. But considering we only have one bike lane on the south side, do all bikes go? I mean, normally you ride with traffic. Will they be riding against traffic and using that bike lane? And I guess the bicycle might be so here. How does that work?
So, it is a little different to only have one bike lane, but they will only, eastbound traffic will use the bike lane and then westbound traffic, bike traffic, will not have a back bike lane. They will have sharos to indicate that it is a bike route. But we couldn't do it on both sides because of, there's a lot of parking on the street. So, we didn't want to take away the parking on the street. Parking isn't typically allowed in bike lanes. So, they'll, it's protected eastbound and open westbound.
So, there'll be sharos going the other direction then?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Cozmeier.
And the side with the bike lane, I believe, is the side that's generally going uphill, right?
It's on the east side. It'll go up or down, but.
And I know some of the, in the bike lane, like a couple of years ago, some of the, some of the streets that were getting a bike lane on just one side, it would alternate sides based on which one is going uphill or downhill.
So, it was selected, you know, there's a fair amount of duplexes. And so, there's a lot of parking there. And so, we selected it based on the east side.
Any other questions for, come anymore? Go ahead, Ms. Cozmeier.
I've got one more about the land acquisition. Did you hear any more from any of the people that you weren't able to get in touch with as of the last meeting?
Yes, I think, and I can't remember the exact amount, but yes, we, they're slowly trickling in. So, I want to say it was forty, it was forty-something the other one, now I have 56, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
Do those landowners have a chance to negotiate with you even after a court date has been established or after the court date's been set? It has to go through that process?
I don't know exactly, but I think it's when, and city attorney can correct me, but once the appraisals are in, I mean, up to that point, I think we can negotiate that.
So, they can negotiate, but we, court sets a hearing, the appraisers come in, they have their hearing, then they enter an award, then the appellant or party of the landowner can actually decide if they want to appeal it to district court. At any point in that entire process, they can even go to a jury trial on it a year and a half from now. At any point in that process, they can negotiate a sale price.
Any other questions for, for, for me? Well, with that, I would entertain a motion for this. Ms. Chard.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to the council approve a contract with Amino Brothers Construction, Inc. for the 49th Street Switzer to Antioch Street Improvement Projects in the amount of $2,866,714.50.
I have a motion, I have a second. Ms. Cozmeier.
Mr. Mayor, I have a second.
You may invoke a motion, second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Ladyman Clerk, before government finance starts to come to the podium for our finance report.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. So, as of February, the city of Marion's financial position remains very stable with no highlighted concerns. You will see a memo in front of you with, that couples with the monthly report like I promised. Currently, all of our expenditures are trending well below budget and what we would anticipate, which is great. You will see in there though, like I spoke on during the last monthly report, that for sales and use tax, you're going to see zeros. That will only be until next month. So, just a reminder, the sales and use tax lags about two months to get to us. So, we will see Januaries in March's report. So, when I report to you next month, those numbers should look a lot better and we'll be able to speak a little bit more on the revenues and how we're doing there. Any questions?
We have any questions?
Thank you.
Again. All right, let's see, moving on. We had the Public Art Committee minutes for, you know, acting as, are we okay with those? Any questions for, for, for? Well, do we have anything from staff, Mr. Abel? No, sir. Nothing from staff. My understanding is we have an executive session. Okay, and you need one hour? Okay, well, I would entertain a motion for the executive session, Ms. Sanders.
Yes. I'm going to the governing body recess into executive session to pursuant to KSA 74-4319B2 for the purpose of discussing possible development terms for real estate development, which includes consultation with liquid counsel on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship. Present will be the city attorney, city administrator, assistant city administrator, committee development director, finance director, and bond council. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 8:30.
Okay, we have a motion, I have a second. Ms. Chard.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, Ms. Clerk.
Councilmember Caudell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silver's.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
And just for the record, there will be a work session following our, one hour upstairs as well, sir. So, if you want, stick around and come back for that if you want to do so.
Chris Abel, is that correct? There's no chance it'll happen earlier than 8:30, is that correct? What's that, once the executive is at 8:30? Council will presume that it's at 8:30 for sure, correct? Okay, so if I want to go, come back, I'm good? Okay, cool. Thank you. So, what's interesting is, in the packet, it says legal matter, privileged client attorney. But it didn't say anything about relit.
Right.
I figured they're talking about the lawsuit.
It would say pending relegation of the lawsuit. So, I would say they ain't concerned. That's pretty much, I think Justin dropped the ball.
Yes, it's a one point. He said he uses attorney, not sheriff, but he asked about the badge. And.
I think he dropped the ball. If other people, if he waits too long to serve, then it's going to.
I mean, has it, for filing something, it's often first given to government.
Yeah, yeah. And you can Google and find, okay, it's not, all that, but the city.
Has been given a copy officially. I asked him if I can serve the city. I'd love to, turn it out, walk up there, walk right past the podium at city council. There you go, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, except for you have to serve. He sued the, he sued the, all the people individually.
Yeah, the four individuals plus the city.
So, you have to serve the city and then you have to serve each individual. That's a big deal if you don't do it right. He dropped the ball so far.
That's disappointing. I haven't, I haven't stayed on all about that stuff. I assume he knows more about lawsuits than I do. He's had a couple, so. School boards and stuff kicking people out. Speaking of words, there are books that are given to children because those words are too profane. Have you heard about that? There's, you know, very graphic books being given to children in schools across the country. And, and when people go and read those books at school board meetings, they get kicked out of school board meetings because those are inappropriate, inappropriate things to talk about.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that.
He is like 30 years old, wasn't he? See you later.
See ya. You coming back at 8:30?
Uh, probably not.
Well, hopefully I have a recording of it, you can watch the work session.
Awesome. I know.
See ya.
Yeah, I gotta go then, actually. That's kind of often I do the other round.
Move you on, you sticking around for the 8:30 upstairs?
Yeah.
Cool.